I'd like to welcome everybody to the planning board meeting that's scheduled for November 21st, 2011, and I'll call the meeting to order. Has everyone had a chance to take a look at our agenda for today's meeting? Is there any, or any comments or changes?
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve, and we have a second. Okay, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, motion carries. Have you also had an opportunity to take a look at the minutes of our last meeting? And are there any corrections or additions there too? Okay, hearing none, do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Okay, a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, motion carries. Okay, the next item on our agenda for the day's meeting is the discussion of lighting standards to be included in the zoning ordinance. I think everyone received Friday two emails, actually the latter one's the one that we want to address today, of proposed language revisions as well as a spreadsheet that shows comparison between what we are now proposing, or staff is now proposing, versus what the city of Asheville has adopted versus Chatham County, and that's down in Pittsboro, for those that don't know, a little bit west of Raleigh. And also it measures what we're proposing versus Jackson County's ordinance. Debbie, if I might call on you to walk through this with us, I'd appreciate it. And I think, I think first, if you would, let's start with the spreadsheet. And I was talking before we met up here with some of our members. Need to emphasize that what we're proposing as of today is based on initial measurements of foot candles and lumens, not a maintained measurement, and you can walk through that with us, and we'll go over the reasons why, that we'd like to stay with the initial measurement instead of going out after a period of a couple of years, or six months, or whatever, and having to re-measure the lighting intensity at these locations. Go ahead, please.
Yes, sir. Well, we were wanting to go with initial foot candles simply because what we're addressing is new installations, so that rather than writing the ordinance in maintained and then doing the calculations for initial when they first build them, we just are going with initial within the regulations themselves. Maintained foot candles takes into account dirt and grime on lenses, as well as the lumens decreasing over time with use. So depending on the type of light that you're looking at, maintained is .62 or .74 of initial. So that's why when you look at the other jurisdictions, their maintained foot candles are less, and ours are about 150% of theirs, because ours are initial and theirs are maintained. And I looked at these various ordinances, maximums at property lines, vehicular canopies, dusted on, security lights, streetlights, parking and sales and display areas within those various ordinances. For the maximum at property lines, we're proposing .75 initial foot candles. Asheville and Chatham County are both .5 maintained. We're proposing a higher, a three initial foot candles at public rights of way. That is to allow a little bit better visibility if you've got drives to turn into something that you need to see right there, then we're proposing a little bit higher level there on the public rights of way. For vehicular canopies, Asheville has 20 maintained foot candles, Chatham County 24, and then we're proposing 30 of the initial foot candles. Jackson County, it's hard to really compare them in with the others, because their system is radically different than what most of the other ordinances we've looked at have. They have a prescriptive and a performance method, and within their ordinance, they have offered many different ways to comply with their ordinance. Dusted on security lights, we're proposing a maximum of 95 lumens and a maximum pole height of 25 feet, and the pole would be mounted more than 12, or the light would be mounted more than 12 feet high to be regulated. Asheville has a maximum of 9,500 lumens and 25-foot high, but they do allow cutoff, or they require full cutoff in residential zones, but they allow cutoff on decorative posts and other areas. And Chatham County has a full cutoff if greater than 2,000 lumens. For streetlights, we're proposing in residential areas, that'd be a maximum of 9,500 lumens, and in commercial areas, a maximum of 50,000 lumens, and that's the same as Asheville's. We're proposing that a full cutoff is required unless it is 18 feet high or less, and then you could use a glare reduction to have a cutoff. And in parking lots, we're proposing a maximum of six initial foot candles, a maximum of 37 feet high. Asheville's and Chatham County's are the same, and they have a minimum, and then they have a uniformity ratio of four to one, so that for a low to medium activity area, a minimum of .7 foot candles would equal an average of 2.8 maintained foot candles. And in a high activity area, their minimum of .9 would equal an average of 3.6 maintained. And then in sales and display areas, we're proposing a 25-foot initial, I mean 25 initial foot candles and a maximum height of 37 feet. Asheville is 20 maintained with a maximum of 37 feet, and Chatham County is 24 maintained with a maximum of 37 feet.
Okay, before we go on to the language that's proposed, let's, let's visit this a little bit while we're on this chart. Does anyone have any questions or comments related to what's, this is a snapshot of, I guess, what we're proposing in the left-hand column versus others. Is there any questions specific to that before we move on?
Debbie, with regard to parking lots, is there any glare reduction provision that we've got?
We would require full cutoff. I have to look. less than that.
Where is that in the draft, Debbie?
That is on page 2E2.
On page 2?
Yeah, I'm sorry, page 4, E2.
2E2, okay.
Yes.
Do we know with regard to vehicular canopies, the 30-foot candles, do we have any idea what the, once they burn in, and once you get the dirt and everything else, what the average would be from 30?
Depends on the type of light. If you multiply it by .74 or .62, then that's what the maintained would be.
So about 60%, 60 to 70%.
Yeah.
But it didn't actually maintain per se, that's just the way it would end up being, based on your two factors.
Yes.
I'm curious about several aspects here. Again, getting, if we could look at the maximum at property line, please. And by the way, I really appreciate the staff doing the chart. I think it's very helpful. .75 initial again versus .5 maintained for Asheville, and I guess the assumption there is that at a point, the luminaire, if you will, will be opaque in nature, it'll be frosted or dirty, as you say, and so on. So a .75 initial foot candle situation could actually end up to be less than .5 maintained. Am I interpreting that?
It, well, it depends on how dirty it gets and, you know, the dimming over time, but I don't have a calculator with me, but it would be between the two generally.
If you took either one of your two factors, what was it, .6 and .72?
.62 and .74 are the multipliers.
Yeah, so there's a reduction there?
Yes.
In the long term?
Exactly.
Theoretically, okay.
Yeah, that's .55, as it turns out.
Why did we?
.74 would be a .55 maintained foot candles, 62.
.62. .465.
Or .465.
On the vehicular canopy, getting back to Scott's question, the 30 initial, I just want to make sure this is not a subtle, and this is a really tangible illumination standard, that if we look at the IESNA standards, they, of course, the terminology is different, and this is what's befuddling me, it's not just the numbers, but it's the terminology, it's the modifier of the number. And they use average illuminants with light soundings of 10-foot candles, and then we're using maximum average horizontal illuminants. Is that the same?
I think so.
Okay. But we're not sure. So the question is, if we're looking at 30 initial foot candles, however, whatever modifier we use, are we going to apply those same two factors, whichever one you choose, the 74, the .74, and the .6, what again?
62.
62. If we apply those, in the long term, the luminants would be less than 30, but we don't know how close it would be to 20 necessarily. It could be greater than 20.
.74 is 20, .22.
.2.
Yeah.
Right there.
.62. .74.
So what, what did you come up? I'm sorry?
18.6 for .62.
18.6?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, okay.
So the 20 strikes right in the middle, basically, depending on which factor you use. One's less, one's a little higher. So 20 is the norm, the median.
Or 30 is the norm.
Huh?
30 initial would be the middle of that for maintained.
Yeah, that's one, another way of saying.
We heard a lot from the engineer that was advising us, and about the two different methods, prescription and performance, and I was just curious why we're not using those.
Well, as I went through Jackson County's ordinance, it was, it's a little bit confusing. There was a lot of shoulds and we recommend's, but, and they offered ways to calculate that didn't necessarily require a lighting engineer. You take your square footage of property and you multiply it by the type of use that it is, and the number of entryways, and then you get the number of watts that you can have on the property. And it really didn't address as thoroughly what we were trying to do as the way most everyone else is doing it with, you know, you have a certain amount of lumens, and you have a cutoff or a full cutoff. It was, was a lot more vague.
Okay, that said, if, and with respect to the woods and the shoulds and the recommends and so on, would we have been able to fabricate our wording to be more definitive than Jackson County's, a better job, if you will, and still have the two different methods to give our property owners the flexibility that we had talked about? Could that be done?
It could be done, it's just that it pretty much abandons the normal way that everybody else is writing their ordinances, and it's not necessarily a good idea to follow the one that's odd man out.
The one that what?
That's the odd one, that no one else is doing it that way.
So the Asheville and Chatham County ordinance are more, the way they're crafted are more typical, is what we're saying of the industries now.
Yes, they're all addressing lumens and foot candles and the types of fixtures.
Did you look at, I've gone blank?
Carey? Carey?
Well, Carey or Woodfin?
Yeah, we did look at Woodfin.
And what did they do?
I can't tell you right offhand, it's been a long time ago that we looked at Woodfin.
I think we're all trying to, I didn't get hold of this till Friday night, I'm up at 6:00 this morning trying to read things and learn what the attorneys were doing and so on. So it's a steep learning curve right now, fast-moving target. On the dusted on lights, it appears, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but it appears that there are no requirements now for dusted on lights that are 12 or less feet above the ground on a pole, or if they're mounted anywhere else.
That is a proposal, we looked at enforcement issues, basically. If someone goes out and buys a light at Lowe's and puts it up, we will likely not have any idea that they've done that, whereas if they do something that's over 12 feet high, the Progress Energy's probably involved, and they've assured us that, you know, whatever we pass, that's the type of lighting that they're going to be putting in, so it's a matter of being able to enforce it.
Debbie, what are we, the lights now that Progress Energy's putting out?
What type?
Kind of lumens, or comparison?
They offer a wide variety of lumens, and they go from non-cut off all the way up to full cutoff, and I think their poles start at 12 feet and go up to 39 for streetlights.
I'm just trying to figure out how, what kind of effect that this is going to have on the lighting that's out there now.
I think it'll have a big impact on the lighting that's out there now, because a lot of what they put out is not, not cut off or full cut off.
That's the big thing, the cutoff.
Yeah, we want it to shine down on the property that it's meant to light and not out to adjoining property owners.
I'm just having a hard time comparing 9,500 lumens. How much light is that?
It's a little more than 100 watts, approximately 9,550 is, I mean, 1,600, I'm sorry, 1,600 watts is about, I've been looking at this too long. 1,600 lumens is about 100 watt.
So that's 400 or 500 watts then.
And you can't really cross them, it depends on the type of light.
It's a lot of light.
It's bright.
It's a lot of light. If we could get back to the dusted on that's not considered here, and you say, well, there's an enforcement problem because we don't know when people are putting them up, right? To my way of thinking, that's no different than the vacation rental coding we just passed, where somebody decides to rent their house out on, for weekdays or weekends or something of that nature. You have no way of knowing that. So what's the difference?
I don't think there is.
No, there's no difference. So if it's good for one, why can't it be good for this?
I may not be understanding your point, since we allow them in all districts, rather than regulating them.
Let me rephrase you. If I understand your rationale, the reason why you're not imparting any standards for dusted on lights at 12 or less feet on a pole, or mounted anywhere else, is that in your mind, it's an enforcement issue?
Mm-hmm.
Right? And that, and you just acknowledge that we wouldn't know if people were putting these lights up, and you wouldn't have a way to enforce it. And so my question is, well, it's a very, very much of a parallel with the vacation rental issue. You wouldn't know when people were starting to rent their houses out for vacation rentals. There's no requirement for them to report to you that they've done that.
But it's an allowed use everywhere, so we don't need to know if they're doing it.
Still, though, I mean, your enforcement of the issue is no different for that than it is, and it would be for this. But I guess to get to the bigger issue, the overwhelming number of emails and the public surge that you've heard on all of this has to do with dusted on security lights in general, and it's not just pole-mounted. And I don't see, I just don't understand why we were going in a good direction, and it just seems we're doing a turnabout here. And you can mount these lights on barns, on fences, and, and the citizens are complaining about not what's about to happen, they're complaining about what exists now. I mean, they're concerned for what's going forward, and they're happy that something's being done, but it would seem to me that 12 feet's pretty high off the ground. And why we're not considering that is, I just don't, I don't quite understand that. And I think that's one of the major issues. I'll yield for right now, Mr. Chairman, and if anybody else has any comments, I have some more on other ones.
Okay. Well, I will say this, just to clear things up, whatever we, whatever we arrive at addresses going forward, it doesn't, you know, everybody's vested where they are today, correct, John?
Yes.
In other words, we're not going to, the county will not be out there asking those current business owners or residential owners to change their lighting based on what we come up with. I think everybody knows that, but I just wanted to kind of clear that up. You know, this is a going-forward piece of language that we're trying to craft here.
You would only be required to change existing lighting if you do something that requires a building permit, is that correct?
Well, the zoning ordinance already has a section in it for non-conformance, and what we would do is apply that same section to lighting, so that anything you have that is non-conforming, if it's discontinued for 180 days, then it could not be put back, but if it is replaced within that 180 days, it could be put back exactly as it was, not made to be more non-conforming. But in the instance of your, you know, your convenience store, if you tore down that canopy, as long as you put it, started putting it back, pulled your permits in 180 days, you could put it back as it had been.
Oh, okay.
But you took out the, or at least we don't see any reference to a sunset provision, a five-year sunset provision, so are you saying that the non-conforming, and I haven't read them in detail yet, but let me just ask you this way, is it possible that a property owner within the non-conforming use provisions could go beyond five years?
Yes, we took out that section. I talked with Shannon Tuck in City, and she had, in her presentation to you, said that we have a provision in our ordinance where anything that's leased from Progress Energy in five years would have to be replaced and be made, to be made conforming. When I looked at the language in the Asheville ordinance, it is not just leased things that are required to be made conforming, but it's all open bottom utility-type lights that would have to be made conforming, whether it's leased or it's privately owned. Our attorney's office strongly advised that we not have leased open bottom utility-type lights being required to be made conforming, and not all of them, because that is not equal treatment under the law, and is something that we should never do. So that's why we took that out.
Your use of the term open bottom, that brings up something here. If we could go, of course, now with the attorney's take on. If we could go, of course, now with the attorney's take on this, what I'm going to talk about's all been wiped out, so I'm not sure what to ask. Did you, the staff, have a chance to reconcile your draft with the attorney's?
Yes, that's the one that I sent out at the end of the day Friday. If you're talking about all the part that was stricken in, starting on page 3B, 1, 2, and 3. Is that the part you were going to ask about?
Yeah.
Because what we say in the beginning of B on applicability, 1, 2, and 3 are simply a reutterance of that and redundant, and that's why they recommended just striking all that.
A question on paragraph B on page 3, the attorney's version.
And let me say first off, the red is what staff had changed prior to the attorney's comments, and the attorney's comments were made in blue.
Okay, good. That's the way I took that. The first line of paragraph B on page 3 reads, "Applicability: Lighting standards shall apply to new, and is now worded, commercial and industrial development, et cetera." And the word "development" has been used from the beginning. And I was just wondering, would it be better to use the word "construction" in lieu of "development"? To me, "development" connotes a development. And could there not be new, commercial, and industrial construction that is not a development? That needs to be approved or by the Board of Adjustment or by us or whatever?
Well, development implies construction, but it would be not necessarily what you'd think of as a building if there was an existing business out there already and they decided to expand and put in a whole new parking lot. That would be development.
But if they go in and replace fixtures on an existing parking lot, do they have to bring them in compliance? Would that be development?
That is covered under the non-compliance issue that I talked about before. If you're replacing something that's non-conforming, it can be replaced if it's done within 180 days. If you take it down and you don't replace it within 180 days, what goes in then must conform.
So if you have the old, we used to call them mercury vapor-type lights, and one of them has to be replaced, you can replace it with the same type of technology?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to hear from the attorney on why they did what they did.
Okay, Mike, could you help us with that, please?
All I have to do is ask. You know, I always believe that less is more. I mean, we look at this, and clearly the intent is to aim this at commercial and industrial. I think if we put into language residential, non-residential installation, you know, it just, the references are just muddy. They just seem very muddy. We just tried to clean it up to make sure that everyone's just focused clearly on new, commercial, and industrial. And if you just focused on those, as set forth in the beginning of paragraph B, the other, the remaining language is just surplusage. I don't think it helps at all. I think it's just muddies the water. So we're just trying to aim it as requested, just at the commercial and industrial only. And the 12-foot and under aspect is, you know, clearly residential.
Well, when I read it this, over the weekend and also this morning, again, it looked like that's what you were doing. Cleaned it up or anything else.
Yeah, again, just less is more. Just trying to clean it up, make it more succinct.
Does anyone else have any comments related to the chart? Of course, I don't, you know, the chart translates over to the narrative that we're going to go over in just a second as well. But if not, let's go over the narrative real quick, please.
And I'll just go through the changes that were made. As I said, red is, and this, red and blue is all changes from what you saw at the last planning board meeting. Red is what staff had proposed changing, and then blue is what the attorney's proposed changing. And we've, on page 3B, we pretty much covered that change. Under exemptions, the attorney's office recommended adding temporary lighting use for public purposes, including but not limited to highway construction and public utility repairs. The intent is certainly to exclude those from this requirement. So we added that to C. On page 4E, we changed an "and" to an "or" for your maximum at property lines. And then 1II, the maximum average light level for developed area of the project will be .45-foot candles. That was in response to a couple engineers who said that they thought the point, the six-foot candles, again, we're talking initial, was a little bit high.
Are you saying .45 or 4.5?
4.5. On E2, we changed semi-cutoff fixture to cutoff. Our intent had been cut off, and that was just a misstatement that we had in a couple places here. The intent was to allow...
And the difference, again, between full cutoff and cutoff?
Full cutoff does not allow any light above 90 degrees from the fixture, the luminaire. A cutoff allows 2.5% above the 90-degree mark, and semi-cutoff allows 5%.
Debbie, why was the reduction from 6.0 to 4.5?
We just had a couple engineers that said that it was a little bit high and not in line with what other ordinance is allowed.
So if this is at the time of installation, that 4.5-foot candles could go down to 3?
It would go down to, that sounds bright, yes. And then, in looking at, say, parking lot lighting for Asheville and then display areas, their average would be, low to medium activity would be 2.8 maintained. And a high-activity level, that's like a shopping mall kind of thing, their average would be 3.6 maintained.
Okay, on I and II. In I, the terminology is the maximum light levels at any point. In II, the terminology is the maximum average light level for the developed area. Those are very different, of course.
Yes.
And meant to be that way.
Yes. You would take the, all the light levels in a whole developed area for your average. So there would be maximums much higher than that. And then for, at the property line on I, that is anywhere along the property line. It could not be more than .75.
Debbie, that's, when we saw the engineer brought those, the diagrams, that's those outer rings he was showing?
Yes, yes.
So the intensity in the middle, and as those went out, we were seeing those lower levels. So that's I. Is that outer ring somewhat?
I would, yes.
Okay.
Where it hits the property line on the edge. Under 5, page 5, 4, vehicular canopies, we changed that 40 lumens per square foot of canopy to a maximum average of 30-foot candles. In 5, we added the dusted-on security lights mounted higher than 12 feet to be those that are regulated.
On paragraph 4 on page 5, where we talk about the 30-foot candles, if we're going to be consistent with your chart on the vehicular canopies, wouldn't you want to have in the wording 30 initial foot candles?
In the definition of foot candles, we say that all of the references to foot candles are initial. So that all the way through, we just say foot candles and don't say initial again.
Good point. Thank you.
In page 5, number 6, we changed, again, "commercial" to "commercial and industrial areas" at the suggestion of the attorney's office. We added through here on the dusted-on and other lighting types how the height would be measured. So we added above the lowest adjacent grade to several points through here as that would be where the measurement for height would be to the light.
What's the relationship on 7? What's the relationship to 6-foot candles and the 4.5 that was reduced before? Should those be similar, or is that okay?
The 6-foot candles, the 4.5 is the average for the whole project developed area. 6-foot candles, it, because it's a parking area and there are some security issues, would be allowed to be a brighter intensity.
Is that like, if we're like an ATM or certain specific security?
Well, that doesn't address the, an ATM, but any outdoor parking area, if you've got, from a convenience store all the way up to shopping mall.
And again, the horizontal, is it, is it grade? It's on the surface?
Yes.
Measured across the asphalt or whatever?
Yes. And we added for page 6, number 7 and number 8, a 37-foot height limit for those lights. We had not had a height limit stated in here before. And page 6F, the attorney's office recommended, rather than qualified professional, we state licensed engineer as those are the ones that conceal a plan. And changed semi-cutoff to cutoff in number 1. And then number 2, we struck "commercial" and "new development" simply because that was a leftover from when we initially drafted this and it was intended to only address new commercial development. And then page 7, 5, we struck for outdoor commercial sales. Again, that was left from when we initially drafted to only apply to new commercial development.
Okay, thanks.
I have one question. If we have some new schools, and if we have new outdoor fields that require nighttime lighting, I don't know where they would fall or if we've considered that in, you know, our definitions and exceptions and exemptions. I know we have the two new schools being built, but I mean, as we move forward and grow in our parks and rec, you know, those kinds of nighttime lighting situations, I just don't know if they've been thought about for this.
It hasn't.
The public use, but it's not really...
Yeah, I'm not sure we fully addressed that here. The lighting standards, they do apply to commercial and industrial, so I don't think they would apply to government. I think that's, that would have to be our interpretation.
Can you repeat that, Debbie?
Said the standards apply to new, commercial, and industrial, so they would not apply to public school.
Okay. Does anyone have anything else? Questions, comments?
Under administration and enforcement, just for example, if we were designing a new residential subdivision and we could prove that our lighting was going to be in compliance, say, through Progress Energy specs, and we could show the proposed lighting on our site plan, would that be sufficient for waiving the requirement for an engineered lighting plan?
The zoning administrator would have to look at all of your documentation, and if he thought it did show that you met all the requirements, he could waive that requirement. If he was not certain, it could go to the Board of Adjustment for a public hearing, and then they would also have the ability to waive that requirement.
Question on page 5. Paragraph 6, triple I. Last sentence. The last part of the last sentence, where it says, "The luminaire may consist of a cutoff fixture if the zoning administrator or Board of Adjustment determines that proper glare reduction measures are taken." What will those two entities use as guidelines to determine? How will that be done?
Well, it would be the application. The applicant would have to show that that has been done, and there's various methods of glare reduction. Or it could, you know, it could be that there's fencing or screening. There could be ways other than just glare reduction within the luminaire itself that could be taken into account. That's why we didn't state just specific measures that could be taken.
One last clarification for me, and I'm still real disappointed on the dawn to dusk. And I realize I'm the lone salmon going upstream, but I just find that disappointing. But are we, are we now saying, I just want to make sure I'm clear, are we now saying that for commercial and industrial entities, if a property owner comes back and wants to put in a whole new light system, there's no governance of that?
If they're replacing a system...
Yeah. If there's one light out there that's gone bad or got hit with a board or something, and they go and replace it, there's no governance of that?
They can put back what they had. They could not make it more non-conforming.
A non-conforming light. Or they could do a whole system.
Or they could do a whole system if it's done within 180 days. Generally, if they were putting in a whole new system, they would go for something more energy-efficient and it would be at least less non-conforming.
If their lighting system was upward, it projected all the lighting up from the valley, and you can see it from the mountains, and we're not, and if they do it within the non-conforming requirements of 180 days, we haven't gained a thing then.
They can replace what they had before.
And go right back and do the same thing. That just doesn't seem right.
Well, I guess, you know, go back and let's talk about where, what, I guess, the commissioners originally directed the planning department to do was new commercial. That's it.
I understand. Okay.
We have taken steps past that, but I just, I guess, in looking at what had gone on while I was on vacation, I just felt like that, you know, we are, we are taking a step forward, and we're talking about new residential in the future. But I just, there was, I guess, the, we've got a kind of way, I guess, the, the direction that we're going to go into, originally from what the commissioners had told us, was just, you know, new commercial. And I just, you know, I mean, obviously, as a planning board, you know, the majority of you want to recommend, you know, whatever direction we need to take, we'll do that. And I just, you know, I guess that need to have everybody's comment on seeing where we are today, because I just, I struggle with going out and telling somebody up Robinson Cove in, in Sandy mush that they got to take down the bar line. I just, you know, I have a real, I really, I really struggle with that. So to get into an amortization, I, I guess, a, a five-year amortization schedule and, and say that we're going to do away with, I guess, has been referred to mercury vapor lights or streetlights that are on private property. I mean, if that's the direction that everybody wants to go, obviously, that's what we'll do, but I personally can't recommend that at this stage. I just can't.
Well, I think something else we need to consider also, and I know a couple of years ago, we struggled with the hillside development slope ordinance as well. This thing's going to kind of always be a moving target. Presently, we don't have an ordinance. We need a starting point somewhere, which doesn't mean this can't be revisited down the road by future planning boards or, or those of us that remain on the planning board. Again, I think this is a starting point. I don't know that, well, we, well, I do know too, because we went through vacation rentals as well as with Scott's leadership, the slope ordinance, none of us will, none of us, meaning the public included, will never agree totally on what kind of language needs to be in this piece as we move forward. Again, I think we need to look at it as a starting point, and I think we need to get it as close to right as possible. But then it, it needs to evolve, and of course, assuming that the commissioners approve what we recommend, whatever that may be. Again, it's nothing to say that at the end of 2012 or 13 or whatever, that we don't need to revisit some things. I think Scott, back to the slope and hillside development ordinance, you know, that's been on the books for somewhere over a year now, but we really hadn't had an opportunity to test it because there hadn't been any development out there. This is somewhat similar, I think, in that regard. So, again, we can beat this thing to death and spend all the time you'd like on it, and I do think we need to try to get it as right as possible. But let's keep in mind, it's, it's, once it's approved by the county commissioners, still doesn't mean we can't revisit it at some point in time, or that they could ask us to revisit it at some point in time. Is that a fair statement? Okay. Does anybody have anything else? Now, I do know, and Joe and I talked about this beforehand a little bit, since this information came out late Friday afternoon, the final version from Mike's office, I think some of our members didn't have an opportunity to visit carefully what was being proposed here today. And so I'm not so certain that we need to take a poll today to see if we want to move forward with this language, or whether, and I'll, I'll poll the board in this regard, would you like to sit on this for one more meeting before we try to kick it back out for public comment, or, or move forward with it? And I don't really care. Again, I'd like to get it as right as possible before we move forward, but if I may, Mr. Hudson?
I think we ought to move forward. I think we spent enough time on it.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know, do we, what would we hope to gain at this point?
I'm, I'm comfortable, I guess is what I'm saying.
Joe, I think I know where you are, but go right ahead, please.
I didn't get to see it till Friday night, and I've had other obligations for the weekend, so I don't feel I'm doing the commissioners nor the public the due diligence that should be done. And so I would appreciate some more time to consider it, and I, I just think we owe that to the commissioners and to the public, but that's my thought.
Michelle?
I think, I think the adjustments to, I know what you're saying, Joe, but I think the adjustments that they made, the attorneys did, to concisely make this more targeted to commercial industrial makes me feel comfortable moving forward with this, in the knowledge that if there was something in the residential realm that needed to be addressed, that I think that would be separate, separately discussed. So I would say, after listening today, I feel like we should move this piece forward as it is, and then think about any other concerns that citizens have that aren't related to commercial or industrial development.
Okay.
Did I help you?
Yeah, I guess.
But the reality is, though, that nothing will be done for a long, long time if it's passed.
I mean, that's...
Yeah.
That's the reality, everybody's going to put this aside, and that'll be it.
I think, you know, Joe, I, I hear you, but I do have to say that there are a lot of can of worms with residential. And if we even go and start talking about it, I think this, this is critical, this particular part, to enforce it, commercial and industrial standards. It would be smart to put it, put something out there now. But my fear is that when you start going down these roads, I mean, John said it too, I really think there's a lot more there that people are going to want to discuss, and we'll be sitting here for four months, not that that's not okay, but I think getting this on now for these targeted, specific industries makes more sense, because I think the long time is going to happen, even if we don't move forward with this, just discussing it. So I, and I don't think that you, you can bring it. I mean, you're a member of, you know, the planning board, so, I mean, if everybody wants to talk about something else. But getting this done and solid, you know, the retaining wall thing, that's, that's a good example, you know? There was a problem, we've got a problem, let's address it, you know, before something new happens that's going to be a problem. So that's kind of where I sit on that, you know? And that doesn't necessarily mean it won't happen, but I hear, I hear what you're saying.
But the irony of this is that we're not addressing the complaints. No one's complained about commercial and industrial.
I, well...
Well, we are, we do have a residential piece in here, although I understand the limitations there too, but we do have a residential piece, and, and in that regard, we went beyond what the commissioners have asked us to do.
And I respect that, and I'm glad we're doing that.
Okay, Mr. Hughes?
I think moving it forward is probably the right thing to do. You know, no ordinance that's ever been created, I mean, I've, I've been on this board for a long time now, and I've seen a lot of this stuff come through, and the fact is, is that number one, no one, everyone, ever gets exactly what they wanted with any of it. But the other piece of it too is, is that this will have an impact. I think from a commercial development standpoint, from new activities that are going to, that are coming into the area, I think it will have a very immediate and direct impact. You know, are there things that, that might be put into it that, that might enhance it? Obviously, but I think all we're doing at this point by moving it forward is giving the public a chance to speak to it and to, to hear what they have to say. And, you know, I think once, once we have that information, there may be, you know, changes that need to be made, both from the commercial side of things and from the individual side of things. So I would, I would say let's move it forward and get it out there and let folks take a look at it.
Okay, thank you. Well, you kind of heard what I said a little while ago, I, you know, we can craft and craft, and we're not going to satisfy everybody. I think we've come a long ways, we, this is a great initial piece. Again, I hear you, Joe, this, if there are changes to be addressed, it may be a long time down the road, I don't necessarily disagree with that as well. But I would concur with everybody else, so I think Debbie and John, if you don't mind, let's go ahead and publish this for public comment.
Public hearing?
Public hearing, I'm sorry, yes.
And I'd like to commend the staff for taking a really technical, difficult thing that nobody knew anything about before. None of us did, probably still don't, but...
Right. I'm one of those.
I am too.
Okay. All right, we'll move to the next item on our agenda for today, and that is public comment. Would anyone like to come up and speak? And if so, again, identify yourself and where you live, if you can, and limit it to three minutes.
Morning.
Morning.
My name is Jim Brown. I'm, I live in South Buncombe County, and I guess I have some questions after today's discussion. Does the sales and displays requirement apply to billboards? So there's no requirement here on digital billboards or, or lights that are directed up on billboards?
Well, the county sign ordinance does not allow digital, but this applies to, to commercial and industrial development.
Also, one other question on government buildings. So if I have a, a school like, like on Ken Creek Road that is built next to me, there are no requirements on cutoff lighting and that sort of thing?
Again, it would be commercial and industrial, so no, it wouldn't apply to government buildings, but we would certainly look at that.
Yes, I, I think that having a school next to me, especially with a soccer field or a tennis court where someone forgets to turn the lights off, I've seen other city ordinances and county ordinances that required a certain time limit on how long lights could stay on, on public courts and that sort of thing. I would recommend that. And I also share the concern about the, the dawn-to-dusk lights. I wish there were a way that that could be addressed better, so that's all the comments I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown, thank you. Mr. Christman?
Good morning.
Morning.
I'm Calvin Christman, live in the Broad River area, south of Black Mountain. Two quick comments, I think, just to echo what, what Jim just said on the dusted-on yard lights. I don't think you're quite there yet. That is probably the most intrusive and the most bothersome to neighbors of anything that's out there, and I think you might want to consider that further before you finalize. I kind of put that in the same category as smoking ordinances, people sometimes object to those. As far as I'm concerned, feel free to smoke, just don't exhale around me. You know, put any lights you want in your yard, just stop a light at the property line. So, you know, we need to be able to, to make that work. The only other comment I would give you is on your vehicular canopies, that 30-foot candles stands out. I understand it's initial versus, versus maintained. There are other ordinances out there, and I don't know how they're all written, so I don't know whether they're all maintained or not. Woodfin has 20-foot candles, Black Mountain 24, Waynesville 15. So I think you're a little high there, and that's, that's one of the areas of concern. It's written so that these are full cutoff under the canopies, which is good, but there's actually a danger in having these lights too high, that people get in there, gas their car, their eyes adjust away from night vision, they get out on a, a county road that's not lit, and they can't see a pedestrian, they can't see a parked car if its lights are off, whatever, for a period of time. So there is an issue there. I think you need to make sure that that 30 translates back to a lower level of illumination. I would think you might do better to get it down to 20 and go from there, but I, I think that bears a little more investigation as well. But you, you put in a lot of hard work on this, the staff has, and I would congratulate you on that, and for struggling with getting to the right place. Thanks.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else?
I'm DeeDee Stiles, and I live in Lytle Cove in Swananoa. I also feel like that most of the comments we've heard and most of the problems with the lighting are not from the commercial and industrial, but from people's yard lights and residential lighting. So, but I also understand that the, as a branch, as a, that, that the planning board serves at the behest of the county commissioners, and if they've asked you to do commercial and residential, then that's probably what they expect. But I think at the time that this, well, with public comment, once this is open for a public hearing, and you get a lot more requests for limiting, especially dawn-to-dusk, dusk-to-dawn lights, that maybe the county commissioners will see it differently, and particularly if enough people attend the county commissioners' meeting and ask for that. I think that's what, one of the things that's going to have to happen, but for the county commissioners to give you that charge, to, to work on that. So, yeah, I, I would like to see more control of residential lighting, but I understand that your, your directions from the county commissioners was industrial, and so I think it's really good that you have included the residential, at least on the taller poles, and put some cutoff regulations on that, because at where I live, it's a real nuisance. The problem where we are, at the bottom of the mountain, is that even if the lights are, have full cutoff and they, still the light goes down, we still see it, because we're under it, you know, we're below it. And I don't know if there's any solution to that.
Okay, thank you, DeeDee. Okay, I think that takes care of the public comment period, so I'll close that item on our agenda. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Go move.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson.
Second?
Got a second? Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Okay, thank you so much for your time. See you December 5th. Maybe.